This meeting will be delivered in accordance with Section 59453 of the Ralph and Brown Act. Series Resolution 22-148 and Federal American Statability. While this meeting is officially open to the public, given the state emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19 members of the public, they also participate in comment meeting applications soon. Remote public comments also available for the planning commission meeting by emailing planning@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 p.m. on date of the meeting. For the agenda item number for public commentary subject on the written comment will be distributed to the planning commission and kept on file as part of official records. We do have one piece corresponded up here. Would that work in total?
Yes. I'm sorry, we're going to go to the open office first before we move on. So our speech will be cleared with panel members being mentioned to the open office for our new commissioners. I'm sorry. So can you please have Sweden Terror and Jane Moon joining down in my opinion, right?
Hi, sorry to interrupt. This is Christian Smith with the city attorney's office. The audio is on the Zoom.
We had some issues earlier today. Okay, and they still can't hear?
I think yes, it was just really quiet.
Can you hear now?
Yeah, that's, that's better.
I think it's because he didn't have his mic on. And that will help the feedback from when someone else was speaking.
Okay.
So just make sure you guys turn your mics on when you, when you speak, okay?
Right, thanks.
Okay. You guys, so you're ready? I'm speaking.
I'm speaking.
It's all unfair, it's all unfair, that is the word that I support. It was to the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of California. It is all these, this, that, and this, or that, dramatic, that I will be a true faith with allegiance, that I will be true to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, that I would take this obligation purely, that I would take obligation purely, without any intellectual reservation, without intellectual reservation or persuasion or purpose of freedom, and that I will willingly, uh, represent this statute legally, potential, um, election of the. Mr. Delaro?
Brother.
Mr. John Woo? Mr. Johnson?
Brother.
Commissioner Cattle, your, Commissioner Otero. President.
Do you want to be a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with equal fairness and justice for all.
Then we'll go on, so. There's now selection, Shepherd is the main way Shepherd. Who we nominate?
I'll, I'll start that if I can. He's, he's sitting in the right spot. He's looking at me. You're giving orders. I nominate Mr. Cattle for chairperson.
Yeah. And stick the vote on that.
Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Commissioner John Woo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Otero?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cattle?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, congratulations.
And now we have the last question. All right, so the foundation of Delaro. Second to that.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner John Woo?
Aye.
Commissioner Otero?
Aye.
Commissioner Cattle?
Aye.
And Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, so we have Commissioner Cattle, we have Chairperson, and Commissioner Delaro, we have Rice for chair.
Conflict of interest, there are, does anyone have a conflict of interest, anything on that? And then citizens of communication. This is my question for you. Citizens who comment on items not strictly on the agenda. While planning commission welcomes and carries participation in planning meetings, that that involves a lot of five minutes per session on agenda. Madam, madam, the chair's reaching planning commission, not on the most agenda, may be addressed by the general public over how free law, where this planning commission can action on any matter which is not on the most agenda, unless in general we can burst it out of planning commission. Citizens who are unable to address the planning commission on any issue, the issue should be implied at provision. Is there anyone in the audience who are going to speak at this time, be open to open? So either one of the other comments you have received through Zoom. Those that participate, who are either being ready to request to speak, keep your hand up now located in the bottom of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press nine on your phone, making me call an order for questions. And your microphone will be not getting with sound to speak. Do we have anyone on?
I see no answers at this time.
And, uh, having heard, seeing that you've all asked.
None at this time.
Okay, the back will move on to the same calendar. Their describers on the same calendar, at number one, first quarter closing, end of the month, the beginning of the planning commission, January seventeenth, thousand forty-three, both of them, eight thirty, thousand one hundred and three. And who missed, this is the hundred and twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, assuming that just the three of us, the long lead, that, and all of those.
Yes, I believe the new commissioners will need to stay in the voting on the minutes.
Okay, we did a motion while we were in the same calendar. I'll make a motion that we accept it, it's in the home. Also, we vote separately.
Yes, so I'm, I'm gonna need that Mr. Delaro is motioning to override on one on the same calendar.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's take the vote for that, Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Commissioner John Woo?
I'm standing.
Just for the minute, children.
Okay, it's okay, Mr. Johnson?
Uh.
Commissioner Otero?
Aye.
And Chairperson Cattle?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Now we'll take a motion for the minutes, item two on the same calendar.
Okay, motion of the original movement, the first, we are, we're moving. And I'll second it.
Okay, I'll take the vote, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cattle?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, two extensions.
Okay, moving on, now to the public hearings. We have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. First of those is secret meeting that, in their case, could be, this is like the fourth time venue, the vote for two-year time extension, request for first people to implement, detection of income, residence, residential project, located in twenty-eight hundred to twenty-eight oh eight, they grow, be your, 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 your.
Yes, we have staff report, thank you. Uh, as you said, this is the fourth time extension for this project. Uh, there are no major changes at this time, and this is, this is again a twenty-unit multifamily residential project. Staff recommends approval for the project with the, uh, the same conditions of approval that were used previously with the minor changes, um, as described, um, in the conditions. And, um, so that, that's, that would be our recommendation is, uh, for approval of this time extension, thank you.
Are there any differences on the time extension that you're given?
Not for this type of, uh, project, no.
Any commissioners have questions to staff? Seeing that, then we'll then open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this matter, please come and vote, you can name an address. That's what you have to say. Say no, and you have no one to submit to this matter.
I see no answers at this time.
So in the open hearing, there's that, and we, we're coming, we're coming. Awesome, it's a project, we're not, been around, get around for. With that, I'll, I'll make a recommendation on it. Any more discuss, any more discussion by anybody, um, maybe, no? Okay. Make determination that the extension request is consistent with the original project and the approval of the time extension is not adding to further environmental review pursuant to chief of guidelines, fifteen, three, three, two, class thirty-two, and approval of sixteen oh eight, these, PCDB for time extension, subject to findings and conditions contained in the attached draft resolution twenty-three oh one. You have a second on that? I'll second. Your motion second, any pressure? For who's taking the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner John Woo?
Aye.
Commissioner Otero?
Aye.
And Chairperson Cattle?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Right, my question. And then, so, of hearing, this is condition use permit, SCB twenty-two, yeah, eighteen, a vote for six thousand square foot commercial building, including thirty-six hundred square foot, four hundred twenty-four hundred square foot retail space. Uh, at thirty-one oh nine East River Road, Arvin, Samira, and.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is a proposal for a conditional use permit for a sports bar behind Farmer Boys and behind Gateway Car Wash, um, off of the northeast corner of Mitchell and Service. Um, the project includes two components, one would be a sports bar, and the other is a commercial retail space, um, which is twenty-four hundred square feet, the sports bar is thirty-six hundred square feet. Um, staff has reviewed the project, including the parking and the, the project description, and we find that it's in alignment with our municipal code. Um, there's adequate parking, there's adequate, um, uh, trash enclosure and, um, ingress and egress, even though it's a landlocked parcel, um, there's ingress and egress, um, by way of a reciprocal access easement. So staff recommends approval of this project as well. And that concludes, uh, the staff report, if any questions, please, uh, by all means.
Any questions for staff at this time? Seeing that, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this, please come and put in your name and address and comments on the project. Wait, oh, yes, sir.
Um, I just wanted to know if anyone had any comments, questions, that they have to ask for you of building elevation and site plan. Uh, hey, if they'd like to see your, have any question about this stuff.
Any questions you have? Thank you. Good, thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the matter, please come forward. Have anyone on Zoom?
I see no answers at this time.
Okay. That's fine, we'll close the moment and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. I have one question, uh, Steph, does this refer to the, the, uh, city staff, the, the, the department? And fire? I guess what I'm getting at, there are many issues about the access to it, it's kind of stuck behind a couple of uses.
Uh, this was routed to departments and there, there were no, um, but, but, there, there were no objections to the access.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. Anything else? Comments on this? I guess stand your motion, so I can make a motion, please. So. Sliding on that. That, that motion, please, yeah. President, staff record the project exactly environmental view, since the guidelines, one, five, thirty-three, two, and the decision of the existing, the minds, we give that person. Okay.
Aye, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner John Woo?
Aye.
Commissioner Delaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Otero?
Aye.
And Chairperson Cattle?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, now, under third public hearing, we need to split the kind of. So general land amendment, DBM twenty-two dash nineteen, best intended parcel map. BDBM twenty-two, yeah, under conditional use permits, DBM twenty-two dash twenty-one, closest to new regional commercial buildings, fifteen hundred, two hundred thirty square feet, excuse me, fifteen thousand, hundred thirty, thirteen, thirteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-two square feet, and a one hundred and forty-five unit apartment complex on three proposed parcels located in thirty-one through six, major.
Um, yes, this project has a little bit of history, so let me go through that first. In, uh, twenty nineteen, a project very similar to this, with only minor differences in square footage, uh, for the commercial buildings, and very, very small changes to the parking area for the, uh, residential portion of this project. Um, was brought forward to the planning commission. The planning commission at that time voted to approve the project on a three to two vote, and subsequent to that, the city council, uh, um, reviewed and voted on this project, uh, one yes and four no. Um, since that time, uh, we've had, a few years passed, that we've gone through pandemic, and, uh, um, applicant has done market research to see if there's any way to, um, use the entire site as commercial, that was one of the, the points that was brought up by the city council. And after doing that market research, they found that, um, the only way to use the depth of that site, which is, um, several hundred feet deep, um, would be to have a, a large anchor store be part of the, uh, the commercial development. And given the site's location, that is not viable, um, to have a large commercial store along this, this part, it's not on a corner, it's, it's just along. Um, it's a road, and so the, the best and highest, uh, use, land use for this property would be, um, commercial on the, the third of the property that's closest to Mitchell Road, which is our commercial corridor, and high density residential behind it, um, which follows the pattern of the neighboring properties to the north, which also have commercial along Mitchell Road and a resident, high, high, high density residential behind it. Um, the project includes, um, two commercial stores, as was mentioned, and a one hundred and forty-five unit residential, uh, complex in the back with six apartment buildings, uh, a pool and a community building. Uh, the access to the site is, uh, down the center of the site between the two commercial buildings, there's, uh, gated access for, um, some control and, uh, security for the, for the residents that live behind the, the commercial facility. And there's also a secondary access for, uh, emergency vehicles such as fire trucks, um, on the northern end of the property. The fire code, like, I, I spoke with the fire marshal, the fire code requires that second access, um, and this meets the fire code. Uh, the travel lanes throughout the, um, around, around the residential complex are one foot wider than what is required by the fire code, so they, it exceeds what's required in the fire code. And that, that's not for just a regular fire truck, that would be for an aerial fire truck, um, with the real tall ladders, so even those are, um, are accomplished with this, um, with this project. Um, it also meets the environmental review, um, and, uh, staff recommends approval for this project. Uh, we feel it would be a good addition to this area, will bring in, um, some tax base and improve the area. Um, it's currently a single family home with, um, sort of light industrial use with, uh, with semi-trucks, um, parking on the, on the site, and the, the majority of the site is vacant, though. And so this would be an improvement to the site, it would bring us tax base, and, um, we're also in a housing crisis, so it's important for us to build this housing, it would provide a, a new option, we don't have, um, a lot of this in the area, and this type of housing would, would be uh, much needed to help us fight that housing crisis, so for those reasons, um, staff feels this is, this is an important and, and a helpful project for our city.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your question, yeah, just to clarify. You have businesses up front and then commercial person, houses in the back. The last time we looked at it, this one to make sure we didn't have any of the houses up front, or personal in the back, or what, what you were saying?
It was virtually the same last time.
About the same thing?
Yep.
And then why did not, did the city council not approve it?
The main reason, um, looking, looking back, and, and the minutes of meeting are, are in the packet too, is the main reason was that, that, that there was a feeling that if the whole site could be used commercially, that that would be a better option. However, after the market research was done, that, that was found to be not viable.
Okay. So there's, there's still a little bit of requirement on low, low housing district?
This would be a high density residential district.
Sorry.
And, uh, also the architecture, uh, that we reviewed for the, for the, um, apartment buildings is high quality. Um, they've got kind of a modern look with, with their colors, they've got, um, and they, they've got, um, a community building there that has an exercise room, they have a pool, and so this would be, and it's a gated area, so this would be, um, a pretty high quality, um, mix of one, two, and three bedroom units.
Okay. That's a little bit, thank you. Anyone else, um, has a question at this point, but, uh? Seeing that, I guess you go ahead, vote, vote again.
And have David Pratt of SIRIS, let's talk about the last time it was brought up, and was rejected, I made a thing that there wasn't a lack of parking. And it really didn't look that good as far as getting the fire equipment in there. I'm still looking at half currently, everybody thinks that, that, that's out there, when you talk about a car, and then basically that, and you got that, but, it still does not look like a good, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that when I went, I had to look at these things. And when I get home, I'm gonna look at, it's a plot line. I still don't think that's a good, that's gonna be a good mix for that. And when it comes up with the council, the council meeting, the, the, that, that doesn't get voted down now, but there'll be a, I'm pretty sure there'll be a lot of people at the, at the council meeting, uh, on this subject, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who can be on this, who should be on the matter, any reorders?
Union Commissioners and USAT, I'm in Bay Harbor, my name is Rob, Dylan, forty-seven oh three, Pub Lane, Tracy. Uh, also, I'm English, I'm in, you guys have any questions on terms of our project? And I'm here with the, my engineering team, uh, those owners, so please feel free to ask me questions.
I mean, in response to the comment that you just heard?
Um, we personally, uh, just, uh, used for that, uh, and, uh, but, but, I mean, even, and see how it's, as they're based on, thinking that we're actually using the best use, not first, I mean, you, you, you like, just not excuse for that, you know, we are, as the hell of a process, moving back to the dead, that message, with this great, actually, development, and housing, apartment, so, that's what I was doing.
I have any other questions, comments, just now? Right, now, anyone else on the stadium, there's none, oh. Seeing that, we'll go to the Zoom, do you have anyone?
I see no answers at this time.
I see no entries at this time.
And we have nobody else to give a word up because. And, and next we have. And I mean, I love that you have a letter from. And it's required department to do, fire access, and they have very, very fine to accept it. And then you have, um, one down.
Fire department. Comment that said that is okay last time and.
Thank you. Still kind of, it is very. Still not on fast. The issue is finding. And it's the, that is the, that is the. Is the whole, that's long ways to. And. For access, we are in an access to the university. Maybe I already do the country. And this. For the. And that's. This is a general land amendment, so we will go to the, uh, city council regardless of whether those team. Did I, will not be planned in your recommendation. Considered. We have our intention and we have the law. On motion. There. Remember then. Their motion, their main motion for proof of project and putting on. These are listed in the staff report. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Their motion. Second amendment approval, is that what I did this day before? All of those.
Yes, Commissioner Jungu.
Aye.
Commissioner Donero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Otero. Now, and Chekerson Catchell.
Aye.
The motion passes three two.
Again, we do this, we have not other beings, not, I believe it is not managed initially, our program, the mission staff, uh. Reports. Commission, do you hear anything?
Well, I'd like to welcome our two new commissioners. Seems like, uh. That'd be a good board here. Glad to have you.
We have some good questions. Commissioners, if I'm being, I'm a little bit, little bit out, and shout out to the most certain ones. Good points. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, resident series. But, 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 uh, to, uh. Graduate reasons and. Shocking. Kind of super. Thank you very much. Well, thank you.
Um, I grew up here in the series, but I currently am a chair of office, but I've been in leadership for the past five years and work in the government for the past ten years. Looking forward to serving citizens of, um, cities.
Yeah, I know. That's all we, all we want to board. Christian, you guys step it up. Every time, you know, this is. People have some polish here. Or, yeah. Chekerson, uh. Is the mayor was being chaired before, and I didn't say he before. It's not getting any easier, put it that way, or best as the staff, or this is all trying to do best I can, and sure. We should let the person that lives here, you know, that I want to commit to us.
Absolutely.
Your support. Senior, anything more?
Hi, nothing to report from the city attorney. And my name's Christian Smith and, um, filling in tonight, but it's been a pleasure attending and I hope to work with you all going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Stanner.
This is the engineer.
Uh, nothing else to report. Um, we're looking to hire a planner still, so if you know anybody, um, have them sign up on our, uh, human resources website and, um. Uh, welcome to our new commissioners. We're excited to have you here and look forward to this coming year. Thanks.
Again, I need to, this is really the, the important, we need both, so it's finally, it's a big goal of you and. As you in person, so if you have any questions, please go over to the channel and tag me.
There you are.
Well, I just want to welcome you guys to the, um, when you'll be forward to working with me.
This has been discussed for years. All right, you've always encouraged, and you mentioned, you want to take your hand, your staff, your resources. Uh, they will welcome your questions. Correct the, uh, to the better master salary. And it's a big act, and you may prepare to serve as against the entity. And with that, I guess we'll adjourn to the next national meeting scheduled for Monday, February six thousand twenty three.